First item is to approve the agenda, and we do have some additions.
We'll approve with additions.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carried.
Oh, yeah. Without a gen item, I have one item to bring up. On page two of the legal service agreement, on page two, or item number three, this term of the agreement shall begin the first day of 2013. Is that correct?
I think even on the first page it has it, two words blank, where it's the dates are left open.
I didn't know it was completely preserved, too. It's just the date of 2013. I mean, I didn't know whether it's just a formality we're agreeing.
I presume it's for 14.
She'll check it out. Thank you. No citizens to be heard for anything other than sign the agenda, so let's pay the bills. So move. Second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Bills are paid. We have with us this morning Amy Park. Good morning. Amy's from the city of Moorhead, and she is to request tax forfeit property. How are you, Amy? Welcome. Nice to have you with us.
I'm good. Good morning. Before you today is just a resolution for the transfer of some property to the city tax forfeit property. This is a fairly perfunctory task. We've done it last year for the stone milling Johnson Farms, and now we're getting more properties coming in tax forfeit, and so this is a resolution that we need to transfer and get that deed from the state of Minnesota.
Any questions for Amy? Anybody? Do we have a motion?
Slow move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye. Amy?
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks for coming. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Can we do that earlier?
I'm talking about number six. The others are, we've got public hearings.
We've just got our typical year-end transfers again. We've got our county project debt retirement. We're looking for about $1,500, or about $1,300 to the negative in that fund, but $1,500 should cover that. And then also in the joint highway facility debt service, we're looking for $26,000. We will be getting a little bit of aid in today, but we don't have that quite calculated, so $26,000 looks like a safe number.
You know, that's budgeted certainly, but it's just that it's short right now.
It's short right now. By the end of the collection of the bond, payment of the bond, it should be zero, so it's just a temporary advance for these funds. And then the family service center, right now we're at about negative 186. We'll have a few more receipts coming in and a few journal entries, so I'm just looking for up to 250. I'm thinking more of 200 in that range, but just to be safe, up to 250.
There are two. I thought that there wasn't going to be any deficit this year in that.
Next year. Next year, we paid off the bond now, so next year we should be.
Next year we'll be okay.
We should be okay next year.
I'll move that we do the year-end inter-fund transfers as listed.
Second.
Discussion.
I just want to kind of, you know, that family service center, that number's been higher in the past than what this is. So certainly it's in the right direction.
Yes, it's looking pretty decent right now.
Where the budget itself is self-sustaining within that without having to have this extra.
Right, and next year it should be. We should have a zero for that number, hopefully.
All in favor say aye. Motion is carried.
Thank you.
I think at this time we will go to some committee reports. Frank, could we start with you?
Okay.
We can't go to the others because these are hearings that we can't open until.
Let's see, Wednesday, December 18th, I was at a Move Minnesota thing where they're trying to look to find some new ways to get some money for highways and stuff. Family Healthcare, December 19th, there we went over CEO performance appraisals and recruiting a plan for a new CEO there. FM Co. the same day that day, where we went over the new projects coming up, the order of presidents, and I was lucky enough to be now chairman of that place, of FM Co., so moved up there. Then also went to arts and trails, or recreation trails, year-end meeting, I guess, where we appointed Ben Bugley as a new member. That's pretty much my meetings.
Chief?
Let's see, I think I had gone to the Greater Fargo Mardi D.C. annual final meeting, and pretty much just some year-end business there. They had a nice recognition of Mayor of Oxland for his service for the E.D.C., and I did attend the MetroCo meeting, I had a chance to do that finally this year, and that was it for me.
John?
Okay, I was so excited about having to bring only one book today, I forgot my last year's book, so I have to do this by memory. I know that I was at the Move Minnesota meeting with Frank, and I had to leave early because I went over to Fargo for a meeting dealing with mental health initiatives for public health, and Gina Nolte is leading that up, and it was really interesting, all of the people that they had gathered together for that in the two cities that dealing with mental health issues and trying to find new ways to deal with mental health issues so that we're not missing people in the process. It's a steering committee at this point, and they're just coming up with ideas on how we can try to fill the gaps and so on, but very interesting process. I also had a Lakeland board meeting, and Lakeland Mental Health is doing well. Pretty routine business meeting, although the one thing that was talked about was the results of the week-long trial that was here in this courthouse the week before, and that was a property issue where Lakeland Region Hospital bought the old building that Lakeland had on their campus prior to their new building, their new building. And after the agreements were made, Lakeland changed CEOs and came back, not Lakeland, Lakeland Region changed CEOs and came back with a feeling that they needed more money for, that we needed to fix up, spend more money on fixing up the building before, and so there was a week-long trial to determine that, and where they did end up saying that we had put aside $25,000, Lakeland had to fix anything that needed fixing, they were requesting $430,000. And turned out the court ruled that, yes, we had somehow failed to meet the obligations of the contract, but they only awarded them $35,000, so we felt it was a win, even though it was officially determined that we were in error, there was only $10,000 more than we had set aside instead of the $400,000, so that was good. We'd been dealing with that for, you know, for a couple of years, and glad to get it done, but it did take a whole week and trial, jury trial here to do it, so, yeah. Oh, a couple more. It reminded me, we had some other meetings. Yes, the highway committee meeting, I don't recall the exact specifics of that, but we dealt again with how to spend the money that's going to come in from the wage tax. That was discussed again. We're not completely resolved on that yet, but the biggest issue now is how we share with the cities, and we'll continue to discuss that. There was a solid waste managers interview meeting, which we were very pleased with the interviews. We had four people we interviewed, and that process went well. We were very delighted with the quality of the applicants, and we have one person that we're going to interview one more time, and hopefully we'll be, after that, would be ready to hire. There was a land management meeting also with diversion, and pretty routine things, looking again at properties that need to be purchased, and, but no major divisions in that, it was pretty good, so I think that's all.
Okay, I just had two to report, and John just did the one, and that was on the solid waste interviews, and we had quite the range in applicants there based on those that we interviewed, but hopefully that'll move along in the right direction, and I think there might be a second interview setup or two, I think. And then, of course, the only other meeting that I had was the last diversion authority meeting, and that one, the main two topics of interest on that one were, well, actually there were three things. One was they talked about the continuing work on the Maple River physical model, and how the rivers would interchange and flow of each other, and they're progressing with that model, and it's going to be pretty interesting to see how that happens, and they've seen some pictures of some areas in Europe and other places where they've done this, and it's been very successful, even on much larger scales than what we're talking about here. And then there was some discussion regarding the environmental impact statement that Minnesota DNR is working on, and of course, a portion of that work is actually being funded or paid for through the diversion authority, and prior to this, I believe, a number that they had set aside for that was $750,000, and I think the number was just approved to go up to 780. That's a new estimate, am I correct, Brian, on that? So that was approved by the diversion authority. And I think that's, and then afterwards, they held a kind of an open house, and they actually had a aerial view of the whole project where the tieback levy starts on the Minnesota side, and then as it moves west across the river and then into Cass County, and then the, and it's, I mean, it just shows just the significance and size of the project. It's big, but it's very interesting to see, and they're hoping through technology that they can even get more into the 3D so they can get an idea of depths and channels and heights of the tieback levies and all that kind of stuff to see, but it's amazing to see technology and how they can map that stuff now, and I'm not sure if that's available yet. Brian, is that available on the fmdiversion.com website?
I'm not sure if it's on the FM site, but they have been showing it. I know they had it at a legislative body, and I think we talked about that night bringing it over here, didn't we?
Yep.
Yeah, we'd like to see how the commissioners all see it. It's pretty impressive.
On Wednesday, December 18th, I was at the transportation meeting. John has already reported on that, as has Frank. On Thursday, December 19th, Lake Agassia Regional Library, we had an executive committee meeting, general business and the financial report. Signatory shortfalls from Moorhead and Norman County will mean closing the Moorhead Library on Sundays and the elimination of one associate position. The Shelley Link site in Norman County will also be closed. Because of the five sites in Norman County, this has the lowest usage. The decisions were made because Moore in Norman County chose not to accept the recommended increases. They had three months' notice as to what the ramifications would be. That's all I have, and at this time we are going to go to the agenda additions. Brian, would you like to end the meeting for your reports?
Sure.
I think we should probably take each of these separately. Approve to accept $100 donation from St. James Church Roseland Cemetery, Rose Mounds Cemetery, rather, in Barnesville for Clay County work detail.
So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Carried. Approval to accept $2,500 donation from Larry's Autobody for the K-9 program.
So move. Second.
All in favor say aye. Carried. Approval to renew contracts for West Central Regional Juvenile Center, Lakeland Mental Health, Circle of Nations, and Avions. So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion on that?
Yeah, I mean, this is a new one just brought before us. When we talk about those contracts, are we looking at similar dollar values here, or what?
3% increase.
Yeah, I didn't even get a chance to read it.
Oh, there's no increase at that for the last one.
Okay, and that Avions, when we did, because that was, we also have them for the jail, right, Brian? Did we have a 3% for the jail?
I believe we did. I believe, and we also use them for detox as well.
Yeah.
I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion on number three? All in favor say aye. Carried. Next item is dissolving the Clay-Woakland Community Health Board. Brian, could you speak to that before we?
I could, but Kathy McKay, Mr. Chair, is going to come in at 9:30, and we can handle.
Hold up.
Yes, you don't mind.
We will do that.
It's something that you've already addressed, but she just wanted clarity for the state that there was board action on.
Time for number three.
Okay, public hearing, consideration to grant property tax abatements in the city of Moorhead and city of Dilworth. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
So move.
Second. All in favor say aye. Hearing is open. Laurie?
I believe you have the list of the parcels that did qualify for the abatement. The total that we're looking at is just an estimate, but it's about $27,000, and we were anticipating actually under 10, but we had two large apartment buildings in Dilworth that did qualify for the abatement, so this is part of the requirements in order for us to do these abatements, so it's just a list of all the parcels and.
Any questions for Laurie?
So this is new construction stuff, right?
Right.
New construction or?
There are some additions in Moorhead, not Dilworth, but otherwise it's all new construction.
New construction or addition?
Improvements.
Improvements, yeah. Well, I mean, I would move.
We have to close the hearing.
Oh, yeah.
Any further questions for Laurie? Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So move. Second.
All in favor say aye. Hearing is closed.
Thank you.
Karen?
Well, I, through our whole economic development group, this is kind of what we encourage along with the cities of Moorhead and some of these other communities to move forward with this, so, and the fact that it's higher than what we anticipated is probably even better news.
And we just got the list from Dilworth for payable 2015, and that's a pretty significant list.
Yeah, but we've got to remember what we're adding to our tax base.
No, it's a good thing.
Two years down the road, so it's, this is very important to our county, I think, and with that, I would move the request to authorize those payments.
Second. Do we have a second? Discussion. All in favor say aye. Motion is carried. Thanks, Laurie. If Darren can come in at this time, we will jump down to number 10. Brian, is it all right for you to start your report?
Oh, sure, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, a couple of things, I guess, Highway Committee Commissioner Everett's already reported on that. We did talk about some other agreements that, just an update in regards to the Holly Agreement that was capped, and that may have to come back because they want to make some changes on that, but that's okay. I concur, the solid waste interviews, two commissioners reported on that, the solid waste interviews with the managers, boy, we were pretty enthusiastic about the candidates that we had. We felt we had some really good ones, and we're pretty excited about that. I did have a diversion conference call, and I don't think I reported on that last time, mostly talking about the budget and also then the plans for a trip to D.C., and that's going to be delayed a little bit now, and looking at Moorhead representing Minnesota on that with the new mayor and things this year, so I think we'll be all right on that. Commissioner Everett talked about the land management meeting, I attended that as well. Diversion Board meeting, Commissioner Campbell reported on that, and again, we'll make a special effort to get that flyover to it, because that was pretty impressive. I know the commissioners would like to see that. Kathy McKay is going to be coming in on the public health, the designation for the dissolution of the community health board. She also had sent some information to you for information's sake on the progression of the Partners for Health with the four counties in forming that new community health board. If you have any questions on that, you can certainly ask her at that time or myself. One that we've spent, I think we've had probably three meetings on it this last week, and Vicki and I have met with Jenny and Laurie, and we thought we'd have a little discussion this morning, at least report on it, and that is the legal newspaper issue that we're going through. In the past, we've rotated with the three newspapers, and we have a fourth that we considered last year, but the FM Extra has added some positive points to theirs. Jenny feels, and we had talked about it earlier, Jenny was going to check on that a little bit, feels that it could be listed as a legal newspaper, so we're really trying to look at all aspects of it before we make a recommendation to you folks, and we've thought that, like what we've done in the past, is moving the different topics, the legals, the financial first printing, the second financial printing, and then the delinquent. We would have four major topics on that, and we would possibly look at moving that around amongst the four newspapers. The rates vary a little bit, but we thought we'd have just maybe a discussion with you about that to see where you want to go before we ask you to make an official decision on it, which we will next Tuesday, but we've been in discussions with those newspapers, and, you know, we've really tried to consider lots of aspects of it, you know, what would it do financially for those, and how important is it to have a balance within the county in regards to the reports? You know, it is a quote, it's not a bid system that you have to take the cheapest bid. We also looked at circulation versus distribution, you know, the people that subscribe to the paper versus it being dropped off and picked up some places, so what we're, just to give you an idea, what we're looking at then is we're looking, or strongly considering adding the FM Extra and making a recommendation to you that we do all the four and give some business to each of them, is what we're kind of, if that would be kind of, if you think we're going in the right direction on that, because it's a major issue to those folks, so.
I don't have a comment on that. Do you have a comment on that?
Yeah, I do. We also have the option of going electronic, don't we?
Yeah, we've had, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Everett, we would like to do that, although we don't feel that we can without legislation change from a legal standpoint. I know several of the counties are going electronics with their financials, but it's our opinion at this time that we don't know if we want to break that ground or not without legislation change on it.
Okay, so there's a legal issue with that.
Jenny feels, yeah, Jenny feels there is, and I do too, frankly, so we feel that maybe we should wait a little bit on that.
Yeah, I just want to go back. You reminded me of something regarding the diversion authority, and when it comes to land, and I know there's been some land, or occasionally a piece of land comes up that's in the footprint of the project, and as that's coming up, there's, they've developed a process where the diversion authority, with the idea in mind that they might have to buy it anyway at some point in time, that they're going to probably actively pursue trying to purchase that land when it comes up available, and there's a process in place for that, and there is kind of a priority system, I think, that's set by that committee, and of course, you know, they have a priority list, and it still would also include anything that would be hardship cases, it would still need to be included in there, but I just, I wanted to raise that issue up that, and that would all be handled, Brian, correct me, but I think it's the Southeast Cass Water Resource District is the one who would handle the purchasing of all that, using the dollars from Cass County and the state of North Dakota.
That is correct. And, Mr. Chair, those are also issues that the Land Management Committee has addressed as well, and they, you know, of course, I don't want to say it falls in line, but there was also quite a bit of discussion, a former meeting, about the insurance and different things.
More of that's to come, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, but they have purchased parcels within the footprint of what they expect to build the dike in and the channels.
I know my concern on that, and I raised it at the diversion authority meeting, was when they do purchase that land and it happens to be tillable land, that we want to make sure that we right away have a process so that people who are in that ag industry have the ability to, you know, through some sort of an agreement, you know, farm the land even though that the diversion authority may own it until a permanent issue is set, so I think that certainly is the intent.
We talked about that the current operator would be, you know, given the first chance to rent it, and that it, you know, there needs to be, but we talked also about that the current property management company that's working on the homes is not the one that knows necessarily anything about ag land, so they're talking about contracting with another firm to do the land management for farms, so that's yet to be worked out, I think, but they're working on it.
And there's also been a lot of discussion from that same arena, is that they, if it's determined that the land is not to be used for the diking process or whatever, that it would be reverted back to public ownership as well, and that raises a flow concern, flow easement on it.
Private ownership.
Yes, so I know Commissioner Campbell has expressed interest in that as well, so as far as the not doing that too hastily and giving up land that you've purchased and things, but.
Well, my sole comment to the board was if we own something and you sell it too soon and find out that there needs to be an adjustment in your alignment, now you've got to get it back again, you're not looking very smart.
That's right.
You know, so, you know, so I think, you know, I think a little bit of discipline and patience in some of those instances is better than quick reaction.
Absolutely. Absolutely, absolutely.
Brian, anything else?
Well, I just, that, that paper thing was a really important issue that we wanted to get out there. Also, I think it's important that we mentioned to the board that you and I had met with a couple of concerned citizens after the, the public hearing, and had a very good discussion with them in regards to concern that I know Commissioner Everett had mentioned, is that's ag land and the, the valuations and how they've increased, and then they fall out of the side of the, that million five exemption. Oh, and next year, Lori just advised me this yesterday or the day before, that the exemption goes up next year to 1.5, I shouldn't say the exemption, the, what's that titled?
First tier.
First tier taxation of 1.5 million dollars now goes to 1.9 next year. It's about a 26% increase, and that's a real positive.
Well, that helps.
That helps, that's right, mhm. And so, we're working on some things on there as well, so, Mr. Chair, that'd be about it.
Darren, we're going to hold off on you a minute, and we're also going to hold off on you, Tim. Kathy, here to dissolving the Clay Wilken Community Health.
Yes.
Board, and I know it's basically a formality, but have you speak to it, and then we will...
See what you have to say.
Good morning, thank you.
Good morning.
We already talked about this, and we just didn't officially have a motion for dissolving the Clay Wilken Community Health Board. We had a resolution to enter into the new Community Health Board, and we also discussed the joint powers agreement, but I didn't find an official motion on dissolving Clay Wilken.
Well, if I, if I can, Mr. Chairman, when we had our, our last meeting in Barnesville on this, I, the topic of discussion, I think, amongst certainly Clay and Wilken was that, I think all of us supported this idea of dissolving this, but I, at the same point, because this other one wouldn't even take effect until January, January of 2015, what, what does that leave, what does that leave 14? And didn't, weren't we, didn't we talk about passing a resolution contingent upon the other one being approved?
Well, what I need to submit to the state is, is two things, once, one is the dissolving the Clay Wilken Community Health Board, and then at, at the same time, sending another notification of our intent to enter into our new Community Health Board with the four counties. So, the state is fully aware that if something would come up in this next year, they need one year of notification, so hence why we need to submit it January.
So, but, so if we, if we are requesting effective now to dissolve our current health board, and the new one can't be established until January 1st of 2015, what do we have for a health board in 2014?
They will just go back to this original one, but you have to send a notification of dissolution for the, for a year, a notification of a year, as well as the notification of entering the new one for a year. But the state has assured us if something would happen in this next year where that changes, anything changes, then we just go back to the Clay Wilken Community Health Board as required.
And have all four counties now agreed to this?
Yes, the Becker County was the last county to sign the joint powers agreement, and that was last Tuesday. We haven't seen that yet, but my understanding is they've signed that.
Well, this is just for effective January 1st of 2015, right, so actually, you're in a, this board isn't for all of 2014, as far as I'm...
So, the Community Health Board for Clay Wilken, that is correct, is still in effect through 2014. So, we will still do our required meetings this next year as a Clay Wilken Community Health Board.
They need the years notice.
That's correct.
Further discussion, gentlemen?
Mr. Chair, just for clarity, that, that is either by statute or it's by rules of public health, that we, you couldn't dissolve it next year in 2014. You have to have a years' notice, that is a requirement of dissolving it, so.
We can vote on it now, but it won't take effect for a year.
Absolutely, yes, yes.
More to approve. Discussion.
I, I would like John's comments in the record, because I agree, that's, that's what we need to have. I just want some assurance that we're...
Yes, exactly.
That's right. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Carrie.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am lady.
Kathy? Could you give this to Mary? Yeah, never send that copy back to me.
Thanks.
Brian, is yours rather a formality?
In his mind.
Those waiting are on, those waiting are on the payroll, so they're getting paid whether they're up here or not. So, we'll...
That's a tough question to answer.
Request to fill new paralegal position, that's number five on our agenda, and...
Correct.
It's a must if it's...
Good morning, gentlemen, this is a request to fill a new position. It's actually a budgeted position, we've had a position available for a legal secretary for the last three years. I haven't chose to fill it, just based on the economy and how things were, it kind of just buckled down, but it's been available, I've kept that position open, but now in looking at it, instead of filling it as a legal secretary, I'm looking to fill it as a paralegal. We had a paralegal about 10 years ago, we didn't fill that position for the last 10 years. Paralegal is somebody who really works more independent than, say, a legal secretary. And really, for the last numerous years, we've really grown in our use of computers, our e-charging, our, a lot of the e-filing, that type of thing that we do, and so we're looking at someone who would work independently, would monitor that. We've done a lot more of our own appeals nowadays, the Attorney General's Office doesn't take near the amount of those, so this person would look to really fill that void, be able to do that, do a lot of independent research, independent work, and be able to take that on. So, the position is basically budgeted for, it is there, I'm asking to fill it. I am in a look to fill it internally, advertise internally first, I have at least two legal secretaries that would fit the qualifications that are necessary, both education and work experience. So, if the, what I'd asked for, for the board's approval is the filling of the paralegal position, and then the ability to backfill the legal secretary position if I ultimately am able to fill it internally.
Right.
Yeah, we thoroughly discussed this at our last PIC meeting, and, and the committee was in complete support of what Brian wants to do with this position, I think it makes complete sense, so.
Well, you're, Brian, your, your caseload, I would imagine, isn't going down any either, is it?
It's definitely not going down, I assure you, unfortunately.
I just, I, this has been in your budget, I think it's, thank you for holding up as long as you can, but at the same point, we've got to make sure that we can support your department to get the things done that need to be done. I would move to approve the request.
Second. Discussion.
With the backfill, by the way.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Carrie, thank you, Brian.
Happy New Year.
Darren, we're going to ask you to come up now, if you would please. Would be number 10 on our agenda. Healthcare Savings Plan for elected officials.
I'm starting to feel like I'm a filler here. It just happened last night, too.
Now you know your place, huh?
Exactly. So, well, I'm here to discuss the healthcare savings plan for the elected department heads, and we've been kind of messing around with this for about a year, when we first found out that we had to change our personnel policy when our last commissioner left, and we were wondering what payout was going to be, and they informed us that for elected officials, they can't be tied to a sick leave severance or gets sick in vacation time. And so, we had to change our personnel policy to meet that, and so, back in May, we brought the change to the personnel policy of, basically trying to clean up the language of the personnel policy regarding the elected officials and their healthcare savings plan. And noticed that some of the department elected officials came up and said, well, you know, we were kind of, thought this was money coming to us. So, between May and September, basically, we did a lot of research, a lot of discussions with the department heads, elected department heads, the Minnesota State Retirement System, the healthcare savings plan people. We've had numerous meetings with the PIC committee and try to come up with a plan on how we can, we can fix the, the issue. Then back in September, and we thought we had a plan there back in September, where we would give a lump sum payment to the department, elected department heads, and that motion was voted on and passed back in September, September 24th, at the board meeting, where we would pay out a lump sum payment, and then the department heads, elected department heads would contribute an ongoing amount. Well, when we, we sent that back to the Minnesota State Retirement System, they said that the lump sum payments, although we could do a one-time lump sum payment, they couldn't be a different amount. And what we were basing our lump sum payments on was the number of years that the elected department heads had been here as an elected official. And so, that kind of put us into a quandary of, well, we have one elected department head that's been here six years, and one that's been here 22, and then the other two somewhere in between, and so what is the fair amount of a lump sum payment where some, you know, some are getting more than they deserve, and some that are getting less than they deserve? And so, we went back and forth with that on trying to come up with a formula, and also trying to make this its own contract with the department, elected department heads, basically trying to divorce this from the sick leave severance as much as possible, and making this its own standalone and its own section within the policy. And the Minnesota State Retirement System's big hangup was that the numbers that we were trying to use was for the sick leave severance, and there was no real formula for this, for an ongoing program. And so, they could see that we didn't want to do a, a, a lump sum payment as trying to get around what we were, you know, what the law was saying is you can't have sick in vacation. And so, this is the plan that we came up with, it is a, a formula that the Minnesota State Retirement System was looking for, it kind of divorces itself from our sick leave severance, and it's been passed through the Minnesota State Retirement System, and they have given their preapproval on this draft copy. Now, the differences between what we, what I brought to you in September and now, is that this would be an ongoing program where the county would do a contribution to their healthcare savings plan to benefit, you know, as, as far as their health benefits in the future. So, that's kind of the basis of where we're at right now with this, and like I said, we've taken it to the PIC for five months now, actually, and had discussions on this.
But the state of Minnesota, retirement says this is all right.
Yeah, we, I've, we've, we've sent them probably at least four or five different versions of this, and, you know, they have said that this version would work. There was other versions that would work as well, but this would, this one was one that was what...
Well, first of all, Darren, we don't, we have, we don't have to make a decision on this today. I mean, there's nothing pressing on it, right?
No, there's no timeline.
There's no year-end decision.
No, no. It would just be a contract that we would submit to MSRS.
The reason I, I say that is because it's kind of taken on life of its own in the PIC committee, I mean, it's, it's changed so many times that it's, and I'm not sure this is exactly what we talked about at the last PIC meeting, and I don't have any issue with the existing elected officials being made whole on this, because that's what they expected they were going to get, but I'm not sure that I support continuing into the future, and we could separate those two things still, right, if we want to, you know, if we want to make this for the, the current elected people involved here, and then stop it, we can make that decision too, right?
Yeah, I mean, it is a two-year contract, we have to, we have to run it as a two-year contract. Now, whether that gets continued in the future would be up, you know, if the, if the board wants to continue this contract or this program in the future after the two years, then that would be something, we would have to come back every two years and say, do you want to renew this contract under the same stipulations that we, we have here, or, you know, could it be changed?
That's why I'd like it probably to go back to PIC one more time and at least get it finally resolved, and see what everybody thinks, you know, and maybe if we, you know, if we need to do that to continue it, or if we can just, you know, continue it for the existing positions, and then not for any future elected positions.
And that was one of the things that we went back and forth on, on, you know, we, we could throw some numbers out there that would match the sick leave severance, and the first thing that, that the MSRS people said was, well, where did you get these numbers? What's your formula? Well, we didn't have a formula. And so, when, when we said, well, this is a one-time lump sum payment, when they were done with the program, it even then again looked more like we were just doing a payout, which wasn't necessarily the intent of the program. They, they wanted more of a, you know, an ongoing formulated program with consistent contributions using some type of formula. And that was the hurdle that we were trying to get over.
Well, like I said, I think that, you know, we want to do something for the existing elected positions, but if I'm not mistaken, there weren't a lot of counties in the state that are providing this, were there? Seems to me there weren't a whole lot of them.
Probably not a lot, I don't know exactly.
How does the, our attempt to change some of these positions to appointed positions affect this? Will that just be left until those people retire, or do they collect right away when they're no longer an elected official?
Once they're no, no longer elected, they would be paid out, I mean, and then if they, they would have their...
Even if they're still employed, they would be...
Well, they would move to a different...
Fall under the normal sick leave severance.
Yeah, I assume they get paid like they retire, and then would go under the...
Correct, correct. And then they would, they would fall under the sick leave severance.
No, I have the same question, either.
Well, I, I share Grant's thoughts on this, I, I certainly, this, this whole thing was brought forth in the, and, you know, it was sent back to us saying, well, you can't do that, but, but we did it based on what all of our current elected people, their thoughts were on what they should have been and were intended to get, you know, so clearly, that was why we were supporting this, because we felt that all along, they thought they were eligible for it, they should get it, and I certainly agree with that. I, I have some other questions too on it, in terms of, of this scale, and how we, how we got to these numbers, and how it might compare to non-elected people, and what they, what they get in terms of buildup in sick and severance, in terms of, you know, so do we have, is there some equity here? I, I'm always fearful of, of the public impression that here we go, we're, we're establishing something for elected people that nobody else gets, and it isn't, you know, from a public perception, it's a big deal. And so, but yet, I think the public also wants us to be fair, even with our elected people as well. So, I, I don't know how this compares, you know, this, this years of service payout thing, how it compares to, to Brian Bergs as a, or Vicky, or anybody else who is non-elected. How does that, how does that compare? And I'd like a little, a little bit of background on that too, to know that we're, we've got a, a kind of a fair system here for everybody.
Yeah. The, the, and I can't take credit for the formula, but the formula does mirror a lot of the, what the normal sickly, you know, the normal employee would get after that many years. And, and coming up with the 390 base and the 155 every five years, that mirrors pretty much what a normal employee would get. The only difference would be the first four, or the first five years where there's a contribution being made to a department, elected department head that... being made to a department, elected department head that if you were only here as an employee for three years or four years, then you wouldn't get that contribution. So that, that's the difference in this plan, which once again then kind of divorces it from our sick leave severance policy, which is what we're, we were trying to do. You almost have to think of this as, as a, as a new contract with a union where they're saying, where this is, this has nothing to do with sick leave, vacation and sick leave severance. This is a contract that we're going to provide our elected department, elected department heads with a, a healthcare savings plan.
But it was our, but it was our intent to, to make sure that...
To make it as fair as possible.
To, to they had equivalent benefits to everybody else who surrounded them. That's what, that's what our goal was here.
Correct.
And an employee, theirs is based on how much sick leave they've accumulated over time.
Correct, correct.
Whereas an elected person doesn't accumulate any sick time. So they're, so if they've, even if a sick, or if an elected official has used sick time over the, or just not, you know, they don't use sick time, they just don't come to work if they're sick.
Right.
And that's the way it works. But they, they would still be getting paid out this amount.
Correct.
Whereas an employee doesn't, you know, theirs is based on if they use that sick time, then they don't get anything, right, at the end of their employment.
Correct.
There is a difference.
The difference between the sick leave severance as an employee has to be here five years and have at least 300 hours.
And this is, this is why I say that I'm, you know, I support, because it was understood that the current people in those positions would get this, but for the future, I'm not sure I'm supportive of that.
Are you saying you don't want to act on this today?
Yes.
I'm, I'm fine with waiting. I, I mean, obviously I want something done for the ones who, who have this coming.
Well, yeah, I'm fine with waiting too, as long as there's no, nothing that's urgent about it, but is, you know, at what point will we be ready? What we want to do then is to, is to study further.
Well, you'd have another PIC meeting scheduled for January.
PIC will do the work on it, okay.
Thank you.
All right.
We'll now go to the number four item, public hearing intent to amend zoning. Tim, Magnuson?
We have a public hearing intent to amend zoning district property located in the southwest quarter and northwest quarter of Section 1 Riverton Township from Agricultural General and Resource Protection Aggregate to Highway Commercial. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
Sure.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The hearing is open.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There should be a graphic coming up on the screen shortly, and I believe you've got in your pack, it's also something similar to this. A little while ago, we, we talked about a single lot subdivision for commercial use. It's showing up on the screen there as Lot 1, Block 1. Structural Products, excuse me, Structural Properties Minnesota subdivision in the west half of Section 1 Riverton Township. That subdivision was proposed as a commercial subdivision and was approved contingent upon the zoning being changed for it also. The intent here is, the request for rezoning came from Structural Properties of Minnesota. They operate concrete product plants in a number of different areas. Their closest one here, I believe, is in Fergus Falls. And they're trying to do some consolidation, trying to reduce the costs of their, their products. So they are looking at establishing a concrete products manufacturing facility here in Block 1, Lot 1, Block 1 of this new subdivision. In order to do that, it needs to be rezoned to a commercial zone, and the only commercial zone that we have that is really applicable is Highway Commercial. Normally, when it's actually back off a, a large highway, we might not give this a lot of consideration because access to it would be off a gravel road and everything else. This piece of property is a little bit different because County Road 86 now for that first mile or so is paved, it's a 10-ton paved road, it can't take the, the traffic that would be generated by any commercial use at this site. And on the, on the aerial photograph you see up on the screen, there's a small square within Lot 1, Block 1, and that's the approximate location of where the, the concrete block or the concrete products plant would be located. It's only going to take up about two to four acres of a 50-acre site. But the intent, as I said, they're trying to consolidate, reduce some costs. They're working with Aggregate Industries who owns and operates the pit adjacent to this parcel. And their raw materials would come straight out of that pit to the plant. Product would be made, concrete block, whatever. And then it would be shipped out from that site to use locations in the Fargo-Moorhead area and other places. So there's a lot of, a lot of traffic on that road right now from, from gravel trucks. That's one of the reasons it got paved. So a lot of the issues with the, the property owners to the south have been alleviated. The number of trucks hasn't gone down, but at least now when trucks go by their houses, they don't choke on, on dust all the time. The paving of the road took care of the dust issues and has firmed up the road substantially for, for the truck traffic. So the request that's being made is to take that 50-acre lot and rezone it from Agricultural General, Resource Protection Aggregate to Highway Commercial for the establishment of a concrete products plant. The 50-acre lot, if you looked at your, the plat drawing that was included with, with your packet, you know, 50 acres, well, that, that's a lot of area, you know, you could have a lot of things out there. If you looked at the plat drawing, you'll notice that that 50 acres, there's an awful lot of wetland. So the ability to develop 50 acres of commercial there does not exist. Actual buildable area on that, that site is probably under 10 acres. We won't be expecting this to turn into a large commercial operation covering 50 acres because, given the Wetlands Conservation Act and other protection measures, that could not occur.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Any questions for Tim, for anybody? John?
In addition to the wetlands, there, there's, creek runs through there that runs out of the pit across, and we have a neighbor to the west who's often concerned about that.
Right.
Is that going to change that at all?
No, if, I didn't bring my pointer with me, but I... The creek that we're talking about comes through here, crosses the road up here, and there's not a lot of water that's coming directly out of the pit. I mean, they don't pump it into there to have it run out, but it is a natural drain. And it does come across, it has been a concern for, for Mr. Keaton on the west side of the road here. This, the use of this property should have no impact on that particular thing. It's intended to be down here in the south. There is no direct water course coming out of here. Their access to this site will match up with an access on the west side of the road, so there's not going to be any access thrown in that mix. And it should not have any direct impact on that water course. That's more affected by how Aggregate operates the pit than it is anything else over there.
Thank you.
I'm sure that we'll have conversations about it.
Further questions for Tim? Enter came a motion to close the public hearing?
Sure. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing is closed. Your wishes, John.
It should be done by resolution. I was not able to work with Jenny on getting one together, but if you were to pass this, we could have a resolution in front of you next week.
We want a resolution today.
Depending on what you have in front of us next week.
That would be fine.
I would move the resolution to change the, we're changing to Highway Commercial.
Yes, sir.
Zoning. Okay. Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carry.
Thank you very much.
Brian, as much as we want you up here, we're going to take a break. We'll call the meeting back to order, and we have in front of us Lieutenant Brian Green of the Sheriff's Department. And Brian, you would like to review the Clay County All-Hazard Mitigation Amendment.
Well, thank you and good morning. The, I was back, I believe it back in October, we passed the resolution and the adoption of the mitigation plan. In between that time, some of the school districts in Clay County have been applying for safe rooms. DGF and, and Moorhead have both been applying for safe rooms. Homeland Security reviewed my mitigation plan after they okayed it and said that they'd need some more specifics concerning that safe room. And, and basically what that is, it outlines every possibility in, within the county who would be eligible for safe rooms. And I don't know if, if you got the list of the actual amendment?
You got it.
Did you guys get it?
You got it.
So that's basically what they wanted. So I completed that, I sent it back up to them, they reviewed it, and then they go, we need a amendment to adopt it and a resolution, so.
Any questions for Brian, Jim?
So, so, so this is an implementation process to have these sites available to, for the specific needs of a safe, a safe place to go, right? So, but I noticed in here, so some, do some of them need some work to get them up to grade then? Because I see you have in here a hundred to 500,000.
Oh, you know, I did not put that number in there. Basically, it would be new, new building, basically is what it would be. It wouldn't be nothing that's currently already there. So we're looking at building new, so either community center or a high school gym or something like that. That's what the safe rooms would, would be built, so.
Does it require, you know, in-ground shelter or something, below ground?
No, 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 it does not. But the specifications, of course, are, you know, everything is super hardened and stuff like that. It adds a lot of money to it. But, but again, you know, if you, you apply for the mitigation plan and receive it, you know, it's a 75, I believe it's 75-20 split, somewhere like that, so.
So it's additions to the buildings that currently exist, then?
Yep, or it could be, or it could be new construction.
Okay, so there, there would either be something newly built or where you talk about within these areas, something that could be remodeled?
Remodeled or redone, yeah. And I don't, you know, I don't think there's any, that I've heard of it within the county that are looking at that. Be mainly for new construction.
So, so as you move forward with this and then the, so are we looking at trying to get something in every community? Is that...
No, no, that's, that's not. There has been some communities that, that's, you know, expressed interest, City of Moor, or not the City of Moor, but Moorhead School District and DGF Schools have also looked at this. And Holly, this is about two years ago, I talked to the Holly city manager about, they were looking at building a new community center, and they said, well, you know, this is a good time to look at this mitigation plan, see if you can fit it in, so.
Well, I know Barnesville also has got a committee now starting to look at a community center again.
They are.
But they, they need to know about this because they're not listed here other than the school, I see in Barnesville, and Trailer Park maybe.
Yeah, City of Barnesville, I know that.
Okay, yeah.
Further discussion or questions for Lieutenant?
What, being on this list, would that, that give them a greater chance for getting grants or something, or what is it? I don't really, none of them have this.
You know, I didn't, I didn't really understand that either, but because, you know, when I did the mitigation plan, I did it as vague as possible, that, you know, we included the safe rooms within Clay County that, you know, be eligible, but I didn't list each one of them that would be eligible for doing it. So then they turned around and said, oh, well, you need to list them more specifically. And I was never the direction I got from Homeland Security when we did the mitigation plan. So are there going to be more of a chance to get it if they're listed or not? You know, I don't know that, that answer.
So these are buildings and/or locations that would...
Yeah, basically it's, it's the entities that would be able to apply for the mitigation plan.
Okay, okay.
Anything else for Brian?
Mr. Chair, also, Brian, maybe you want to just inform the board of the siren system that they have currently, they have applied for, and haven't they been approved for some warning systems?
They're still up at FEMA still reviewing the plan. This is almost, it takes 18 months to, almost two years to, to look for some mitigation money to do an update on either sirens or a safe room or stuff like that. And we're still in the process of that. I did a combination of one of the different cities, Yewin, Glendon, and Barnesville, and who am I missing? Oh, Hittodah, to do new sirens. Now that, of course, we had to do, they just had the mitigation plan, we had to finish that and get that completed. And then that went forward to FEMA, and I've not heard from FEMA since then, but that's still going forward. If Barnesville was kind of unique, that'd be in the fairgrounds, and that's where the PA system.
I, I would move the, that we, move the resolution that we adopt the amended Clay County All-Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Brian, number nine.
I have another question though, concerning that though. What, with this derailment that's happened, happened just last night, what kind of plan do we have if that happened downtown Moorhead?
Well, we just actually redid the railroad accident emergency operation plan last year. After what happened in Canada, we went through, we looked at it again, over and over again. I think it was like 10:30, 11 o'clock was the last time I had any contact with anybody in Castle County. Of course, we had to worry about the plume. If that plume was going to come over to Moorhead or Clay County, we would be affected at some way or the other. What we have plans on here, boy, let's hope it never happens to the City of Moor or Barnesville. It's going to be a lot of chaos. You know, we have, we train, our EMS, fire, and plates, we all train on the hazards, all hazards, you know, and we have to respond. Once we respond, we can try to contain the area, have to try to contain the fire best that we can, but you've seen what happened last night. You know, them, basically what it is is when they start on fire, you have to let them burn out because there's no way you can get close enough or you can get enough foam or water on them to put them out. You really can't. You know, what will help us in Fargo-Moorhead basically is that they slow down at a lot less speed. But then again, you've got the railroad tracks that are closer, so if one does, that could happen out there in Castle, and it, you know, it, it's a good possibility. You've got 135 trains coming through here daily. Now, not every one of them has oil, but most of them do. I know there was an article in the Fargo Forum this the other day about, you know, how we have to do something, we have to change how the railroad goes through Fargo-Moorhead, you know, and that's a long-term planning. We're somewhere along the line, we're going to have to try to figure out how we can get them around. Yeah, something like that. But, yeah, we do have plans, and basically I'm going to resend out our emergency operation plan to each department within Clay County, make sure that they review it and they know what the responsibility is. I'll be doing that first of the year.
See, I thought after the 97 flood, in my, in my weird way of thinking, I thought, well, let's reroute the trains and at the same time incorporate a diversion along with the rerouting of the trains and get them out of downtown Fargo-Moorhead. But that went about as far as an idea can go, is, you know, not very far. But, but anyway, going back to what John's question was in terms of, and obviously us focusing on, on the concerns for our county seat here in Moorhead and, and those concerns, and I, you know, I think the people need to know that we, that, that you have established what should be a good plan. There's, there's plans in place for knowing how to evacuate people if people need to be evacuated. So we, you know, the, the potential seems to escalate with the number of trains that we have going through here, the potential for a disaster. And especially with the increased level of what those trains are hauling is, is certainly of concern. But I think the people need to know that, that there's been an awful lot of time spent, actually since 9/11, in making a lot of different preparations for catastrophic events that can happen. I think, I just think the people need to know that you do have a good plan in place.
We, you know, actually, beginning of December, me and Chad Stanley, which is the City of Moor Emergency Manager, we met, and we decided, you know, what, what, we need to try to get a major exercise within Fargo-Moorhead within the next year. And we looked at the NSFF, we made a few contacts with them to try to get kind of the scenario of basically what happened out in Castle, but we'd go back to... basically, what happened out in Castleton, but we'd go back to maybe Glendon, derailing Glendon, and we have to evacuate Glendon, where we're going to bring him, and do all that stuff. So, we had the preliminary tax in the first part of December now, I don't know what's going to happen now with this out there, but that's what we're kind of looking for. Each year, we try to have, you know, kind of a major exercise with all fire EMS and police, that they respond to. Say, tornado last year, tornado in Holly, and we were going to do a railroad one this year, so hopefully, we can still do it, but I don't know what's, you know, what's going to maybe change a little bit of what happened on Castleton. There was, you know, a lot of things, I talked to Emergency Manager, both in Fargo and Cass County, and, you know, anytime this happens, they learn something new, and hopefully, they'll pass it on to us, and then we'll be able to adjust our plans accordingly.
Well, I think another thing that they learn, and, you know, I've seen, you know, the other areas of real concerns for us, and I've worked closely with you, 97 and the '09 floods, and what people need to realize is it becomes more than just a local law enforcement agency there to help, too. This becomes a, something to this magnitude becomes regional, and there gets to be an awful lot of help that would come in, so. And the reason I say this is I happen to see my daughter posted a deal on the internet media, where she's read that article about the deal in Castleton, and her words were, this is scary, you know? And certainly, it's scary, but people need to realize that if something like this were to happen, we're going to have an awful lot of good people that are going to come out to help try to resolve it as well.
Yeah, but, you know, I think it's a lot of support from you guys, from the county board for many years, on your EMS and fire departments and all that stuff, all the support they've had, the training that they have. We continuously train. Maybe this is just, you know, a kind of a little wake-up call for everybody that, hey, we're getting to the point where this could easily happen in Fargo-Moorhead, or any other small counties, or towns in our county, so we'll be prepared. I did contact the state, Homeland Security, of course, they were watching, they were wondering what was going on, and how, you know, is this going to affect, you know, Moorhead or Clay County? At that point last night, I said, you know, we don't know.
Well, I'll make one last comment, because I, you know, this, I've been following and reading on this, and I read that a lot of these older tank cars that are being pulled don't really even have the protection measures on them to handle, you know, something as simple as all law enforcement agencies and governments, to emphasize the importance of making requirements that these, that these things aren't just tin cans going down the road, that they have to have some measures of safety in them, so that when they do get in an accident, they don't, just don't crack and spill with the easiest of accidents, I guess, that's my-
Yeah, and I know they have, they've been looking at them, especially, you know, you have to go up to the federal government, and, you know, how they establish that, and they're looking at it, maybe they need to increase it, which I hope they do, so, but it takes time.
But that starts with you guys suggesting it, too, I think.
Yeah. The other thing I should know, too, you know, on industrial action or something like that, you, the responsibility this is going to be of BNSF, or the railroad companies, through all the money that's going to be spent on all these resources, basically, would come from them.
Brian?
Well, Mr. Chair, too, it was mentioned on the news last night that you guys are well aware that North Dakota's pumping very close to a million barrels of oil a day. They said 90% of that oil is being transported by rail. So, I won't say it's all going, coming through Fargo-Moorhead, but if it is, that's pretty scary. And I think everybody has to realize, too, that the first few minutes of an accident, emergency responders aren't going to be able to help a great deal. It's the aftermath, the evacuation of what could come to plumes, the leaking of the tanks. It's not just the oil that's going through, folks, that's scary. There's some pretty scary chemicals that travel those railroads as well, so. And that's what I think Lieutenant Green was talking about, is that they're trained with hazmat suits and different things to react to those things, so. But the people should know, they should get away from a scene that is occurring like that, is the best thing. Evacuation, not, you know, sometimes it's the quicker the better, especially if a train leaves it. It might not blow up right away, but it might if a fire starts, so.
Brian, vehicle replacement?
Yes, this is a proposal I brought forward, everybody got a copy. We are replacing, we're actually, we're going to sell eight vehicles and replace it with seven new ones. I got the list of the vehicles, and the total amount of purchase was like 191,890. With internal service and auction funds available, we had 289,447, and then excessive funds that return to internal service will, internal service will be 97,557. I guess we're, why, we're looking at, we're only replacing seven. We're kind of, we have a dairy vehicle, and then we also have an EM vehicle. Our EM vehicle basically is to pull our trailer and heavy stuff that we need to get around, and our dairy vehicle was an Expedition. We didn't feel like we needed them two larger vehicles, now we just need one. So, we're going to sell them both and use one as, for bowling purposes. The rest is pretty much standard. State bid, Nelson out of Fergus Falls, got the state bid on all the Ford vehicles, the Dodge, the Fisher, so that was kind of nice. It could only go to one place and get all your vehicles, so. I got all the bids from them, and that was the proposals.
I'll move it. Second.
Discussion.
What is the criteria you're using out for the replacement? Is it mileage?
For our-
Repair record, or what?
No, mileage is part of it, but our mark squads, we replace every three years, and then our unmarked's every four years, unless the mileage is really low on them, and then we will keep them another year. I should also note, too, on that sales tax except that comes first of the year, unmarked vehicles are not included in that, so we still pay.
You have to pay the sales tax, yes.
I just want to make comment, Brian, I just comment here, and this goes to this internal service fund again. You take a look at 2007 Ford Expedition, it's got $53,000 in there. There's no need for that to go that high, that, so that's money that goes specifically dedicated to that item, when it could be going to something, something else.
Something else.
And it, I've kind of harped about this for quite some time. We have that one for 53, we have one in here for 38, and we have one for 32. Not one of the new vehicles that they're proposing purchasing comes close to those dollar amounts. So, at some point in that internal service fund, we have to have a maximum. The internal service fund is a great tool, but-
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Anything else, any of you have?
Oh, I, the, intergovernmental retreat, did everybody get notices on that? Did that, okay. Are you signing up for us, or are we doing that on our own?